Good afternoon. On holiday, the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriation and Housing is now called to order. For the record, today is Thursday, June 24th, and the time now is 2:06. Notes for this public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. First public notice was issued on Monday, June 14, followed by June 22. We have five bills, but they're all similar in nature. We will begin with Bill... We're just gonna capture all the bills together. We'll start with Bill 117-36COR. And Bill 118-36COR. Bill 119-36COR. Bill 125-36COR. We have Bill 126-36COR. These are all... All these bills are all related to the name change of the villages. We do have currently present in the panel, we have the mayor from Inalahan, Mayor Charagolof. The mayor from Talafofu, Mayor Tairigui. The mayor from Yamada, Mayor Kinata. We have the mayor from Agat, Mayor Sisiko. The mayor from Melesu, Mayor Charagolof. The mayor from Sanarita, Mayor Alvarez. And I'd like to recognize the senators that have... My colleagues that have joined me this afternoon. We'll begin with Speaker Theresa Lai, who'll join me. We have Senator Telo Tairigui, who's the author of all five bills. And I think she has a few more coming. And with that, the rules of this... Oh, and Senator Brown, I apologize. Senator Brown's here. I apologize, Senator Brown. Vote people, that's my favorite Republican senator, but you know, it's good. But the rules of this public hearing is those testifying on behalf of the bills, of each one of the bills are... Have been invited, and I've already recognized each one of the mayors. A written testimony shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide my legislative staff with a written testimony for photocopying. Testimony may be read, and lengthy testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. But if you need additional time, I understand. Okay? We'll give you... We'll allow you the time you need. Those testifying will be allowed to present oral testimony. Once you're done, please remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony as may be desired by members of the committee. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or the nature of the agenda, and the agenda is about changing the names of each respective villages. Personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing room. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for this proceedings. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum may be restricted from providing oral testimony and will be removed from the room. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. You state your name and your title for the record. I will now begin with Senator Telo Tairigui, the author of the bills, to please make her opening statement. Thank you, Senator Telo.
Sidoos Masi, Mr. Chair, and I take no offense that I'm not your favorite Republican senator. However, I know I'm your favorite Thai degree Republican senator. Sidoos Masi, Mr. Chair and colleagues, sidoos Masi for joining me in this public hearing for five additional bills which proposes to change the official name of five of our southern villages. Mr. Chair, with your indulgence, I respectfully request to provide my opening and closing remarks covering all five bills and in the interest of time to allow members of the public to offer comments for one or more of the bills when they testify if they so desire. Mr. Chairman, Bill 117, 118, 119, 125, and 126. Build upon the work this 36 Guam legislature has made, beginning with the beautiful village of Inalahan, to restore Chamorro names of all our village. It's not a change, it's to restore. I think, Mr. Chair, I thank you, Mr. Chair, and other co-sponsors of these measures for joining me in recognizing the importance of restoring Chamorro names of our village in a broader effort to preserve, to perpetuate, and to celebrate our indigenous language culture tradition in every way possible. The 117, 118, 119, 125, and 126 seek to recognize the villages of Agat, Yamada, Melesu, Santarita, and Talafofu by the names known by generations before us, namely Hoget, Humatak, Melesu, Santarita, Talafofu. Mr. Chair, with respect to Santarita, I understand the village name may be further modified based on comments offered during the public hearing conducted by Ikamashon, which was held in Hoget on April 13, 2021. I attended the public hearing of the Komashon on April 13, 2021, and would like to thank Hoget Mayor Kevin Siswiko and Vice Mayor Christopher Freheren. Humatak Mayor John Kinata, Melesu Mayor Ernest Charagolof, Santarita Mayor Dale Alvarez, and Talafofu Mayor Vincent Tairigui for supporting the restoration of their prospective villages and their Chamorro name. I thank the residents of these villages for showing up to the Komashon public hearing and for collectively expressing a strong desire to take some important steps, such as the restoration of the Chamorro village names in order to connect with the Guam Chamorro identity. Sumai Village, Finna Village, Faha Bay, pre-Spanish settlement areas, caves, rivers, and springs, and fertile fishing grounds are just some of what southern villages are well-known for. Mr. Chairman, our Chamorro ancestors called these beautiful places our southern villages, Hoget, Humatak, Melesus, Santarita, Talafofu, home. And they took good care of the land and water resources though that we and generations after us can forever call Guam home. Mr. Chairman, our southern villages are peaceful and picturesque, with historical sites attracting not only tourists but residents from across our island who perhaps want to discover or rediscover, in some cases, our island's rich history and culture. In closing, Mr. Chair, I can reiterate enough some of the comments I offered during discussions during the Inalahan name restoration effort, where I quoted Dr. Catherine Ugin's testimony on legislation renaming our island's capital city. Dr. Ugin wrote that decades of colonial administration and the imposition of foreign ideas and concepts have nearly obliterated our history, heritage, and identity as people, and that we have had to rediscover ourselves, our thoughts and ideas, and perhaps someday, we can restore all that we have lost. Mr. Chair, while measures such as Bill 117, 118, 119, 125, and 126 may seem like simple policy proposals, I believe these proposals will help to gradually reshape the lens through our children and young adults identifying our Chamorro history, language, and culture. I look forward to listening to the testimony today, and I am beyond excited that this legislature has recognized how important these bills are to preserving, perpetuating, and celebrating our Chamorro language and culture. Sidoos Masi, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Telo. We'll begin with Inalahan Mayor Charagolof. Bonitos ti sa dos na Charagolof. The familiar Charagolof, look it, I think we... But, accompania.
Ondramblin, Senator Joe Sinagastin. Ondramblis, Senatora, Telo Tairigui. Speaker Theresa Lai, Senatora, Joanne Brown. Then to do is Senatoro, then Senatora, ginigi, mina tentaisais, na liserturan guahan. Buenas, dan holiday. In honor si Anthony Pulino Charagolof Jr., me yot Inalahan. Motudu pago pa ba fais ramdun, ni spotin midu, pa resti man atungoo. Man ga tsongun na me yot i muspipian apom atulaka, inani sing sungnia, pa ri manak propiu gi finu Chamorro. Resti, Bill ni Bill 117, Bill 118, Bill 119, 125, dan 126. Gogowa amdun, ni to do is spotin midu. Ya pedien pasa, esti da tanak propiu magai gi finu Chamorro. Dangin magai na, ma sa sangan na, este kumekke mota, esti lingwahita. Si nete saangan na, ni unaya no mota, dangim atulaka, propiu inani sing sung sia. Ya polo da ma sia, inani sing sung u saga, pa da to do itempo. Pa resti na, i famagonta pago, da ni ma ma... Da ni ma 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 la, na famagonta. Enoa pago, enoa na motu pago pa ba spoti sia. Ya ondankul na sidoos Masi, ni unaya, esti naputti la. Sidoos Masi. Biba Santarita, biba Talafofu, biba Humatak, biba Hoget, biba Melesu, biba Inalahan, biba Chamorro, biba Guahan. Biba.
Biba, sidoos Masi. Mayor Tairigui, you'll be testifying in reference to Bill 126-36. I'm going to identify each bill that you're testifying on, so as you testify. All right?
Okay, sir. For the record, my name is Santi Estaitegui, Mayor Talafofu. Bill number 126-36COR intends to change the official name of the municipality of Talafofu to its Chamorro language name, Talafofu. This process is not only mandated by law, but in the Nefesi we swear to protehi, itanota, defendi, inegata, ikutura, ilangwahi, iaidi, ihanum, and itanu Chamorro. Senators, I don't foresee any controversial issue in doing this or negative impact in the municipality of Talafofu. It's a process that we need to do to correct the mistake of the past. So therefore, let the record show that the Talafofu MPC supports the intent of Bill 126-36. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. We will now move to Mayor Kinata from Yamada. He'll be testifying in support of Bill 118-36COR. Sir, Mayor.
In honor si Johnny Ugin Kinata, Mayor Nomota. Buenas, dan holiday. Honorable Yihulu Senator Joe Sinagastin and all committee members. Today is a momentous day for my people of Humatak. Today, we celebrate and honor our culture, history, our native language by resuscitating the name of our municipality. From Yamada to Humatak. My people are overjoyed with this amendment, as this was one of our many goals to accomplish. This may seem like a small step for others, but this is a huge strike for us. In our beautiful village, we strive to keep our traditions alive. This is one of the many ways we can continue to sustain and encourage the practice of our culture. We hope that this will inspire others to do the same. By fostering this practice, we're allowing our heritage and culture to beautifully shine through. As stated in my written testimony, Humatak is the true name and should the true official name. We thank you, Senator Telo Tairigui, Clint Magel, Joanne Brown, Theresa Lai, Christopher Janus, Anthony Adap, Frank Blas Jr., Joe Sinagastin, Sabina Flores, Tina Munya Barnes, and Joe Pito Tirlahi. My memorial colleagues, the mayors, council of Guam, and last but not least, my beautiful people of Humatak. This is for you. Biba Humatak, and God bless all of you.
Biba. Now we'll have Mayor Sisiko from... On Bill 117-36COR. Sir, Mayor.
Buenas, dan holiday. Honorable Senator Joe Sinagastin. Honorable Senator and author Telo Tairigui of Bill 117-36. Honorable Senators of the 36 Guam Legislature who have co-sponsored this bill and all honorable senators who are present at this hearing today. Ondankul na sidoos Masi for allowing me the opportunity to provide testimony in support of Bill 117-36. My name is Kevin J.T. Siswiko, a lifelong resident, a humble public servant, and the mayor of the municipality of the beautiful village of Agat. As a young leader of our island, it saddens me to not only see but to feel the loss of our culture, our language, and our history. Since taking office in 2015, it has been my personal promise to myself to follow the heartfelt pledge of the Nefesi created by the late Dr. Bernadita Comacho Dunket, who cited "Ginimas takulo gi nasoku, ginimas takulum gi kurasutnu, zainimas figo ninasi nyau, pa ba hou first in maisazo, pa ba protehi, zanu defendi, ihinangi, ikutura, ilingwahi, iaidi, ihanum, zanitano Chamorro, niren shaku derezu gi nasu stahta, zestu ofitma gi loi bliplia, zani banderahu, ibandera guahan." Throughout history and the long-lived stories of the past, it has been written that our village of Hoget existed since the late 1600s. Our village of Hoget is known as the gateway of the South and is filled with history, culture, and traditions. If we want to preserve what's left for our generations to come, now is the time. Now's the time for us to do this. Change is what is to preserve what's left for our generations. We must have a positive outlook and start something new. It's a process which occurs from experiences of the past, the present, and the future. We can no longer wait while the world evolves into its own creation while our beloved island follows a movement and loses its identity. Renaming our village of Agat to Hoget may be... May not be a huge significance to many, but it is of significance to those who have laid the foundation of our history for our people. It is significant for those who are fighting to keep the spirit and the teachings of our ancestors, of the Chamorro people, alive. With many efforts in place to teach and instill the values of our culture, the village of Hoget will continue to take part in that effort. We know that language is a vital part of any culture, and we would like to start with the renaming or restoring of our village name from Agat to Hoget. We must keep the history alive by addressing the village with its historic name of Hoget for future generations and visitors to appreciate the identity and the impact of those who came before us. Signo Masi, sen sidoos Masi to each and every one of you for this opportunity in allowing me to speak on behalf and in support of Bill 117-36, and I humbly request for your support in the passing of this bill. I also like to mention that our MPC is also in support of this bill. Ondankul na sidoos Masi.
Thank you, Mayor. We will now proceed to Bill 119-36COR. Mayor Charagolof from the village of Melesu.
Sidoos Masi, speaker, uh, short person. Buenas, dan holiday, senators. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you to express my support. For the record, my name is Richard Charagolof, the mayor of Marissa. I want to thank you all... Thank all of you guys and the members who have signed on to co-author the bill. And as you all may know, Marissa and Melesu have always been historically used interchangeably to refer to my village. Marissa being the given name, Melesu being the cultural and Chamorro name. As you may all know, Melesu was derived from and associated with the annual Manyahak run, the juvenile rabbit fist that we all have been famous for, as we all have the most abundant and longest run throughout the island. Melesu is the, I would say, center... Well, Agat maybe the gateway. We are the heart and soul of the fishing industry down there because we have probably the largest lagoon. But Melesu is because of the Melesu, the Manyahak, the larger species of the two varieties of the Manyahak. And it's abundantly caught every year, historically, and the Melesu is the one that can go straight into the net while the hot tang, the smaller version, have to be hurried in and earthed into the nets. We have been known as Melesu because of that. And, you know, senators, like all my colleagues say, we need to perpetuate our language and make sure that through history, our children can identify and if anything, at least, like my nephew Mayor Charagolof said, at least our Chamorro name of our villages can remain, but at least do something to perpetuate our language. And I thank all of you guys, you know, for the opportunity once again. I'm sure my people, the majority of my people, would support just as I have supported this because I represent the voices of my village. Maybe not everybody, but the majority, and I thank you very much.
Sidoos Masi. Thank you, Mayor Charagolof. Now we'll have Bill 125-36COR. I'm not going to say my favorite village from Sanarita because my wife is from Sanarita, the Golafon family, but Mayor Alvarez, please.
Good afternoon, senators. Senator Sinagastin. The sponsor for the bill, Senator Telo. Speaker Lai and Joanne, well, Senator. Thank you for inviting me here to testify for the bill. Yes, I am in full support of the bill because, in reality, the name wasn't changed. It's just maybe the pronunciation from Sanarita to Santarita. The people of Santarita were located after the war. They came from Sumai. So that's why I really did like to put Sumai in the name of Santarita/Sumai. And so like I said, with my colleagues here telling their stories about the villages, we from Sanarita just came from Sumai, which Sumai was supposed to be the capital of Guam until the war came. So it's a very productive village. But yes, I am in full support of Santarita. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. As a matter of fact, I was speaking to Senator Telo, and she's going to give me the appropriate amendment on the bill so we can add the Sumai on this. Now that's being said, gosh, I'm in full support of all the changes. I have family on every village that exists here today testifying. And I'm proud. I'm proud, and, you know, many of the folks from all the villages have asked me. When I ask them, "Aphamon, what do you think about the name change?" You know what they say? They say, "Chamorro, eh? Aphon ananga, na la sedig, afon anazon." So you know what? That's why we're doing this hearing today. We were supposed to do it last week, but timing was... Scheduling was not good, but we're going to do it today. And if time permits, we'll wrap it up, and I'll convince the speaker to accept it. We add it on to the agenda so we can end the issue with the villages. We do have one testimony that came in that opposes it, and I'm going to go ahead and read it so that you know that we did receive one testimony against. It came from Mr. Patrick Zirzan. Said, "Dear Senators Sinagastins, holiday, here is my written testimony for today's public hearing at 2:00 PM on Thursday, June 24 regarding Bills 117, 118, 119, 125, and 126." He writes, "I totally oppose the so-called changing the name of any and all villages and places in Guam from English to Chamorro." Next paragraph, "So I oppose Bill 117, Agat to Hoget, Bill 118, Yamada versus Humatak, Bill 119, Marissa versus Melesu, Bill 125, Sanarita versus Sanarita, Bill 126, Talafofu versus Talafofu." Those bills are totally unnecessary because these five villages already have Chamorro names. I guess he doesn't read the bill, no? Itinigi? Ya polo da tanmesco, no? Da ta 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 esti. Okay, it is really sad that people do not even know that Chamorro and English are both already the official languages of Guam. Since Chamorro and English are both the official languages of Guam, all of the island's villages already have Chamorro names. For example, since Chamorro and English are both the official languages of Guam, Aganhaiz is already Totuhan. English, Aganhaiz, Chamorro, Totuhan, both names are correct. One is the English name and one is the Chamorro name. Both English and Chamorro are the official languages of Guam. Just as Guam and Guahan are both correct. Just as Agania and Hagania are both correct. Just as Chamorro and Chamorro are both correct. Just as Inran and Inlan are both correct. One is the English name and one is the Chamorro name. Both English and Chamorro are the official languages of Guam. So Agat, Agat, and Hoget are both correct. So Yamada and Humatak are both correct. So Marissa and Melesu are both correct. So Sanarita and Sanarita are both correct. So Talafofu and Talafofu are both correct. One is the English name and one is the Chamorro name. Both English and Chamorro are the official languages of Guam. So it's totally unnecessary. It's really sad that people do not even know that Chamorro is an official language of Guam. Thank you, sidoos Masi. Sincerely, Patrick T. Zirzan. I accept the opposing statement, but I'm supporting these bills, and we'll move on. Okay? I can't please everybody, but we can... There's more to please here. And with that message, I ask Senator Tairigui if she has any questions to the panel because we do have a former delegate outside that wants to testify in support of the bills. And we have two other individuals. No, just sit down for a sec. Pomakontushio, no? Just the kakayo mono. Yes, it's Senator Tairigui.
Sidoos Masi, Mr. Chair, and just going to say that, for the sake of time, that we also have another testimony that was brought in by Zia Sandova, who's a freshman at the University of Guam. And she's actually, in short, she is a daughter of two Filipino immigrants who came to Guam for a better life and had no siblings' blood relations here, and that she stands in full support of this legislation to keep the Guam history in respect to many of the people's ancestors who have suffered through drastic cultural changes that had occurred centuries ago. There are many of my close Chamorro friends who are concerned about the culture fading into obscurity. I've been antiquated with many people who have a vast Chamorro family tree island and found myself all more surprised discovered that the vast amount of quantities were actually unaware of how the colonialization has truly affected the island. So other than that, Mr. Chair, this is in full support of the measure and appreciate her testimony. That's all I have. I just thank the mayors that are here today who totally respect the jobs that they do and the villages they serve because, you know, I've always considered myself a southern girl and I always will till the day I die. So thank you so much for being here, mayors. Thank you, sidoos Masi.
Thank you, Senator Tairigui. Madam Speaker, do you have any questions or comments for the panel?
No questions. I guess the Mayor Alvarez, if I could just ask you about the Sumai. So the recommendation is to add Sumai. You're in agreement with that? The S-U-M-A-I also? Okay. And I know, I think one of you said that the municipal... The mayor of Agat said that the municipal planning councils also agree, and have all of your municipal planning councils also agree? Okay. All right. Well, of course, I'm in full support, and I want to thank you. I'm very proud to see all of the mayors of the South here at the same time. I think this is a beautiful historic moment. I'm proud to be part of it. And I'm happy that the sponsor of the bill is moving these all at the same time. And I'm glad for what you've testified, that most of you have said that this is going... This is something we should do for future generations especially, so that they are going to be very, very clear as to the history of their villages. And I think that your testimonies have also helped to revive that, that in debating the name and where are the boundaries... name and where are the boundaries that we have kind of, you know, stumbled upon also just a lot of, a lot more talk about the history of these villages. So I want to thank you for all that. And again, of course, thank you for all your work, but most especially, thank you for being here today in Sis Massey. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Brown, do you have any comments or questions to the panel?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and certainly thank you to all our mayors that certainly echo my comments on my fellow colleagues and recognizing to have all our southern mayors and also to have Mayor Charlo from Inarahan. It was not too long ago we were down in his village to celebrate the formal name change back to the original from Inarahan as we grew up Inarahan, as we grew up listening and hearing to Inarahan. And the sense of pride certainly that he and the residents in his village expressed. I was even more impressed going because I didn't realize to the extent, the celebration of pride that would come out in being there and being able to share that time with your residents down there, Mayor, in recognizing, you know, our history of who we are, where we come from. And we've certainly gone through a time in our history where a lot of efforts were made to erase who we are and the Americanization of Guam. All of us may come from, you know, our Chamorro, our Chamorro ancestors and part of us have a little mixes here and there, including myself. But being from Guam, living here most of my life, being raised here, I have a greater and greater appreciation for our history, a greater appreciation for my, well, my mom was born after the war, but my grandparents that lived through the wars, many of us, the hardships that our people have gone through to get to where we are today. And I think it's important to acknowledge that. It's important to have that sense of pride. And certainly for the young people coming up now, that they have an opportunity in this whole revitalization of our culture and our history and our sense of pride. I look at Guam as the center of the world. We can go anywhere from here. And the fact that we are from here more the reason that we have to support and display what is special and what is unique of us at a time when the world is almost becoming the same. So I'm definitely supportive of it. Thank you to each of you for coming and expressing your support. And we look forward to sharing and seeing more of who we are and expressing more of who we are as a people through things like this. Some people might think, oh, it's insignificant, but it says a lot. Says a lot about who we are and where we're from and the pride that we have in our own home village that we come from. So I'm definitely supportive and thank you also, you know, to Senator Tidaway for moving forward this initiative and doing what has been a long time in coming. And it really is a greater expression of who we are and who our identity is as a people. Some people think it's just a simple name change, but there's a lot of meaning. There's a lot of meaning in this. So with that, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you again to our mayors for coming down and providing your testimony this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. I'd ask now the panel, thank you for your testimony. We have three other individuals that will be coming in and we won't have any more questions from the mayors. We have Delegate Underwood coming in and two other individuals are all in support of the bills. Okay? So thank you for coming. Take care. All right. And thank you for the people of Guam for being patient. We have three individuals to speak. I'll have them address their name and their title, if any, or the office they represent. And we'll begin with first of Delegate, former Delegate, Robert Underwood. Sir.
Buenas tardes, half a day. I'm Robert Underwood. I'm Chair of the Naming Committee of the Komisioni Finot Chamorro. So I'm just here testifying in favor of all the legislation. It's not really renaming the villages. And people should understand that we're not renaming the villages. We're just spelling them according to their Chamorro pronunciation. So no one is renaming these villages. On the southern end of the island, in accordance with the traditional Chamorro pronunciation and in accordance with the approved orthography. I'm grateful for the legislature's interest and support on this matter. I would add that this effort is totally in accordance with public law. That's what public law asks that be done. Hasn't been done up to now. The Komisioni Finot Chamorro, den Finanagweni Historia, den Ilinatlanitaltotano, has endeavored to meet these requirements in an orderly and systematic manner. I am requesting, as acknowledged by Mayor Alvarez, that Bill 125 on the matter of Santarita be amended to include Sumai. This was the recommendation of the Komision and is consistent with the testimony provided at that time by Mayor Del Alvarez. I'll be happy to answer any questions about these legislative items and any part of the process that the Komision has engaged in as the Guam Place Name Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I know we have, I think it's Dylan Kim and Gabby Kim, both? Okay, we'll begin with ladies first. Okay? We'll start with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Gabby Kim and I am an incoming sophomore at JFK High School. And I'm also an intern at the Public Policy Institute under Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes. First, I would like to thank you for this opportunity to testify and support bills of 117, 118, 119, 125, and 126 dash 36. As a child, I was raised on Saipan, a small island nearby that shares the same Chamorro language and culture as Guam. Throughout most parts of my life, I learned the Chamorro language and have been surrounded by its culture. However, as I aged, I began to notice that the Chamorro culture that I am very familiar with isn't known to the world as much as I thought, especially the Chamorro language, which is the main reason why I support these bills. With the enactment of these bills with the purpose of changing the official village names to the Chamorro names, I strongly believe that it will have an impact on keeping the Chamorro tradition alive on our island. It not only continues the practice of the Chamorro language, but also is an effective way to make the Chamorro culture more known to the world. It will greatly affect the new incoming generations as well as the young citizens on the island of Guam. Although this may not seem like anything major, I believe it will be a progressive step in keeping the Chamorro tradition, heritage, and culture alive on our island of Guam. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. And you, sir? Can we get a copy of her testimony?
Half a day. My name is Dylan Kim and I'm here to testify. I am an incoming junior at John F. Kennedy High School and an intern at the Public Policy Institute program under Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes. Before I begin, I would like to thank everyone for being here and for giving me the opportunity to testify in support of Bills 117, 118, 119, 125, and 126 dash 36. As an advocate of a cultural preservation, I recognize the importance of this acknowledgement for the Chamorro people. From what I've seen, many young Chamoros today cannot speak their language. If this cycle continues, Chamoros would end up losing their culture, language, and its identity. With the enactment of Bills 117, 118, 119, 125, and 126 dash 36, I truly believe that the Chamorro people will celebrate the preservation and the implementation of their cultural heritage. You may think this simply replaces the old Spanish village names, which may seem trivial, but this is a change that's necessary for the native people of Guam. This is a small start to move our island to the right direction to preserve their culture. Although I come from an Asian background, I understand the importance of cultural identity and stand with the Chamorro people on this decision. Thank you, Chairman and Senators, for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. We'll begin with Senator Tidaway. Do you have anything for the panel?
Sis Massey, Mr. Chair, and I'd like to thank you, especially the youth being here today and inspiring us, people like my age, you know, to remind us of the importance of the next generation and why we're here today to preserve this for you. And I greatly appreciate for you coming today. Thank you so much. And to the Komision, trying to make all the meetings that you're having out there and try and be there to hear what the villages have to say and what the mayors have to say so that I can bring back to my colleagues, you know, the comments and concerns that are brought down. And I greatly appreciate you being here today to provide your testimony, Dr. Underwood, and for the work you're doing. I know it's important to you. It's very important to me as well. It's about restoring the names back. It's not changing. It's restoring. So thank you so much, Dr. Underwood, for continuing this quest and this journey to make the wrong right again. Sis Massey.
Thank you, Senator Tidaway. Delegate Underwood, I'm reading your testimony. You wanted to add Sumai on Bill 125 with Sanarita. How did you propose that? It'll say Santarita and then slash or dash?
Dash.
Dash? Oh, okay. All right. Speaker Therese, do you have any questions for the panel?
No, I guess it's just that the Sumai one that's kind of confusing. One, somebody texted me about, is this a two-village municipality or one? And it's just one. Was, is the original Sumai includes also this whole area? Or were they originally two areas?
I'm not sure. I'm sure that the, you know, the boundaries of that are approximately the same. And so it's that the definition of that is that currently, as Santarita is described in the law, it includes Sumai.
Right, I see that.
So that's always been there. It's the same thing, I just might add that it's the same thing with Jigo and Anderson Air Force Base. And most of Anderson Air Force Base before the war was called Upi. So, you know, it would be similar to that, you know, calling it, I guess you could call it Jigo Anderson Air Force Base, or you could call it Jigo Upi, or you could just leave it a Jigo, you know? Those are all kind of live options. But in this one, we certainly wanted to recognize Sumai because it was the originator of the area. And Santarita is sort of came later.
Yeah, of course. I'm just trying to clarify whether the original Sumai also included the areas that we are now.
Included that area. It did include that area.
Yeah, all the way up the hill. Okay. So the boundaries here are, it looks like Naval Magazine?
Yeah, includes Naval Magazine.
So, all right. So all, just one more time. So all of that was originally Sumai?
Sumai.
Okay. No, I have no further question, but just want to thank you all for your work. And I know that you've been going to all these hearings to, or conducting hearings so that we can get public input on this as well.
It can be a lot of fun, as you know.
I want to thank you. And I thank you both for your testimony. Very helpful as well. I think it's important, your perspective as younger generation, because some of the mayors came in here and said, we're doing this in part for the younger generation. So I appreciate that you are also in support and you recognize that value as well. Sis Massey.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Brown, do you have any comments or questions for the panel?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I certainly echo my appreciation to Dr. Underwood and his continued service to our people and working on what is a very important project and very important process in our community. So thank you, Dr. Underwood, for your continued contribution and your expertise and the heart that you put into the work that you do. And certainly thank you to our young people here from our Public Policy Institute and providing your testimony. It's really appreciated because having your insight and your engagement is important to our community. I hope you continue to do this in the future as issues arise that are of interest or importance to you to come forth and provide that for our community. With that, Mr. Chairman, I have no further comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Senator Brown. Senator Tidaway, author of the bills, do you have any closing statement, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Chair, I'm grateful for all the mayors and the vice mayors and residents of the southern villages and others offering their comments on these measures. Some of the testimonies I've received have been very positive. I hope, and I remain hopeful that these bills will help to inspire our children and young adults to learn more about their, and reconnect with their Chamorro identity. The challenges we as people continue to endure and the responsibilities we share in protecting the resources the Lord has blessed us with. So the future generation will always have a safe and beautiful Guam to call home. Sis Massey. And Biba Hoget, Biba Humatak, Biba Malesu, Biba Santarita Sumai, and Biba Talafofo.
Biba.
Biba.
Yes. Madam Speaker, you wanted?
Shikuna Biba.
I'm sorry. Yes, if I could just ask, Dr. Underwood, at the hearings on the bills that are before us, were there any controversy?
No. You know, there were some people on the side just asking about why this process, but you know, just, you know, the hearings are on file. So we explained what the origin of this is. So pretty much once people understand that we didn't just invent this out of, you know, nothing. It was kind of a prescription that was, been in law for a while. I think people comprehend it. So, you know, I think there's going to be obviously more controversy with place names. And so those place names are then, you know, are coming up, I think, probably in a couple of months. So.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There being no other testimony on this bill, the committee will conclude this public hearing on the following bills. Bill number 117 dash 36 C O R, an act to amend section 403 K of chapter four, title one, Guam Code annotated relative to changing the official name of municipality of Agat to its name in the Chamorro language, namely Hoget. And Bill 118 dash 36 C O R, an act to amend section 403 J of chapter four, title one, Guam Code annotated relative to the changing the official name of municipality of Yumatak, Yumadak, to its name in the Chamorro language, namely Humatak. Bill 119 dash 36 C O R, an act to amend section 403 I of chapter four, title one, Guam Code annotated relative to change the name, changing the official name of municipality of Marisu to its name in the Chamorro language, namely Malesu. Bill 125, an act to amend section 403 I of chapter four, title one, Guam Code annotated relative to change the official name of municipality of Sanarita to its name, Sanarita dash, and we'll amend the bill, dash Sumai. And Bill 126 dash 36 C O R, an act to amend section 403 G of chapter four, title one, Guam Code annotated relative to change the official name of municipality of Talafofo to its name in the Chamorro language, namely Talafofo. All bills were introduced, authored by Senator Telo Tidaway and co-sponsored by many of the senators, even the senators that are present today. We have Senator Brown, myself, Speaker Terlei, Senator Kenry Gell, Senator Chris Duñez, Senator Tony Addis, Senator Frank Gloss, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Senator Peter Terlei. I think I pretty much caught everybody. Thank you very much. That being said, the committee will continue to receive testimony. And please address your written testimony to the Committee on General Government, Operations, Appropriations, and Housing and submit it via email to senatorjoessenawgustin@gmail.com or or to my office located at Rand Care Building, 2nd floor, Suite 3, 761, South Marine Corps Drive, Tumuning, Guam. Sis Massey for your attendance and participation in today's hearing. And for those at home, thank you for watching the public hearing. On all the bills I've identified, 117, 118, 119, 125, and 126 is now adjourned at 2:55. Thank you. Please be safe and have a nice day.